I'm Sean Lynn Jones and I'm co-chair of the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance. We're one of the cosponsors of this event along with the Town Meeting Members Association and the League of Women Voters of Brookline. I'd like to thank the other two organizations and particularly Harry Friedman of the Town Meeting Members Association and my co-chair of the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance, Dan Saltzman, for their help in organizing this event and putting everything together. And in particular, I'd like to thank Amelia Koch, the moderator from the League of Women Voters, who will be, I hope, deathly moderating any controversies that arrive in the course of our discussion of these articles. We're going to look at four topics, one of which is actually covered by two articles. And the first one that we'll consider will be the question of medical marijuana and how to regulate dispensaries for medical marijuana in Brookline. We'll also look at the question of off-street parking in Brookline and how much to require. That's Article 10 before town meeting. Article 16, which looks at the membership of the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission and the broader topic of diversity in town appointments and town personnel in Brookline. And Article 18, which was a resolution regarding surveillance cameras and whether we should or should not have them. Speaking to the first two articles, Article 6 and 7, we're very fortunate to have Dr. Alan Balsam, Director of Health and Human Services for the town of Brookline, and Brookline resident Lisa Barstow. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Amelia to begin tonight's proceedings. Thank you.
And I'll just reiterate for the audience but also for all of the participants who will be coming up, a couple of things. First of all, each side, pro and con, will have a maximum of five minutes to speak. If there are multiple speakers on either side, they must allocate the five minutes between them. Questions from the audience must last no longer than one minute, and I ask that everyone identify themselves by name when you get up to speak, you're called on to speak. Each side will then have a maximum, and they should be addressed to the pro and con speakers, and each side will have a maximum of two minutes to reply, so each of the pro and con sides. And then finally, each side will have one minute to make a closing statement. The order of the speakers will be determined by lot or by coin flip. And since I don't have a coin flip, I'm going to open with one and allow the second one to take the first closing statement. And that being said, why don't we start with you?
Thank you. And thank you, folks, for organizing this forum. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. You did the one last year, too, didn't you?
I did have that.
You moderated that?
I did indeed.
I thought I recognized you. So you might ask, why is Alan Balsam stepping up to advocate for these two warrant articles? Why is medical marijuana a public health issue? Twenty years ago, a small group of us, led by Sheila Decter, who was the executive director of the American Jewish Congress at the time, joined together to start community servings, the Meals on Wheels program for people with AIDS. This program still goes strong today. We put out more than 600 meals every single day. Over those years, I've worked with literally dozens of people with severe illness who have chosen to use cannabis to ease their symptoms, including nausea, diarrhea, and pain, and to stimulate their appetite. Though illegal, these patients found relief through the use of this medicine, which, by the way, had been included in every book listing medicines since antiquity, up until the early 1940s, when it was declared an illegal drug. It's for this reason that I feel so strongly in favor of medical marijuana. Sick people should not have to break the law to get relief. Now what about the two warrant articles? These two warrant articles complement one another in that Article 7 sets zoning requirements and Article 6 sets up a regulatory framework to license any potential dispensary. The zoning article was prepared by the Planning and Community Development Department with input from the police, public health, and the building department, and then approved by the town zoning bylaw committee. It calls for any potential dispensary to be allowed only by special permit by the ZBA in general business, office, and industrial districts. The amended version also excludes local business districts, and it's this amended version that will be advanced at town meeting. It also excludes dispensaries within 500 feet of K through 12 schools. The state regulations clearly state that zoning cannot be used to exclude dispensaries. That's why we chose not to adopt the state's default zoning to buffer daycare centers. I mean frankly, we thought that the chance of children in daycares being influenced by the presence of a dispensary was virtually nil. Since we have scores of daycare centers here in Brookline, buffering them would exclude vis zoning a dispensary in Brookline. The zoning warrant article was approved unanimously by the planning board after a public hearing. It was approved unanimously by the Advisory Council on Public Health after a public hearing. The amended article, which will be the proposal going before town meeting, passed the advisory committee on a vote of 19 to 0 to 2. This article was also passed unanimously by the Board of Selectmen after a public hearing. Let me repeat that. It was approved unanimously by the planning board, it was approved unanimously by the Advisory Council on Public Health, it was approved by a vote of 19 to 0 to 2 by the advisory committee, and approved unanimously by the Board of Selectmen. This zoning article has been well-vetted. The Massachusetts Department of Public Health Regulations, which govern the dispensary process, are the nation's tightest. All applicants must be nonprofits. There are 64 pages of requirements, including security, patient tracking, physician education. You'll hear from Lisa the fear of diversion of marijuana from dispensaries and patients. Look, while no system is perfect, the state regulations call for numerous safeguards, including a felony charge and incarceration of up to five years for anyone gaming the system and diverting marijuana. In fact, you have to ask yourself, why would anyone risk five years in jail when they could simply use the illegal sources currently available and face far more lenient sanctions if caught? If the state health department recommends that a nonprofit dispensary be placed in Brookline, the zoning board of appeals and the Board of Selectmen will have final say, and the health, police, building, fire, and planning departments will also weigh in as provided for in warrant Article 6. For the reasons I've mentioned, and with the support of every town body that has considered them, the planning board, advisory council on public health, advisory committee, Board of Selectmen, and I urge you to support warrant Articles 6 and 7. Thank you.
Almost.
How did I do?
Pretty good.
10 seconds open?
Please.
Thank you.
And by the way, for the audience, we have thankfully a timer who's letting them know when they have one minute left and then when their time is up.
Thank you, Amelia. My name is Lisa Barstow, and I've lived in Brookline Village for over 20 years. I would urge town meeting members to amend the current articles relative to medical marijuana zoning to be a minimum of 500 feet from schools, parks with play structures, local business districts, or storefront buildings with residential dwellings, and importantly, to include daycare centers within the buffer zone. The article as written simply falls short. The Massachusetts Department of Public Health minimum standards call for a 500-foot buffer. Our Brookline requirements should be no less. I would prefer a buffer zone to be 1,000 feet, and I would urge town meeting members to adopt a new or amended warrant article to do just that. First, I want to say that my heart truly breaks for those that are sick and those where smoking pot is really their only means of comfort. I watched as my father and my young sister-in-law went through chemotherapy treatments, and it was dreadful. And if there were something, pot, whatever, that would alleviate their suffering, I think they should have had that choice. But when question three was put forward to the voters, allowing marijuana to be sold for medical purposes, I'm certain that citizens didn't contemplate pot being sold in candy jars at corner stores. Brookline was the first municipality in Massachusetts to ban smoking cigarettes. It would be ironic if we were the first town in Massachusetts to allow smoking pot. Bringing a pot shop to Brookline will increase its recreational use. It has wherever it's been sold. Any addiction doctor or counselor will tell you that when availability goes up, perception of harm goes down, and youth use and addiction increases. As we've seen in California and Colorado, there are doctors lined up to work hand and glove with the pot industry. There are handouts available, and if you don't have one, there's a gentleman in the audience that can provide you one. Behind me is a reference to one of the handouts. Brookline High School already has a higher pot use during school hours than the state and national average, almost twice as high, according to our most recent youth risk behavior survey. In Colorado, youth pot abuse has skyrocketed since medical marijuana was legalized. I've provided two articles in your handouts, and there's many more. Why would we think that increasing access and availability to pot in Brookline would give us a different result than in Colorado? We already have a serious drug problem at Brookline High School. Are we willing to risk generations of kids until we can get the regulations right, or should we start tough right out of the box? We've got to have the most restrictive regulations at the start, and if it goes well, we can consider relaxing those regulations. Kevin Fisher, the marijuana businessman who was eyeing Brookline, has met with all the right parties in town government, and he appears very likable. But he is a businessman, and in a business that not at all resembles health, as we would understand it in Boston, our medical mecca. Mr. Fisher has lobbyists and cannabis advocacy groups working on his behalf. Dr. Alan Balsam surprisingly has joined his circle. It's actually quite troubling that Brookline's Director of Public Health would be so tightly aligned with these business interests. It certainly gives the appearance of a conflict of interest when you consider that Dr. Balsam is responsible for drug control efforts in Brookline. As pot availability and abuse increases, he can apply for new grants, new funding, to increase his budget and his staff. I am truly bothered by this dynamic. The poster behind me is the patient feedback webpage of Rocky Mountain Remedies, the Colorado medical pot shop owned by Kevin Fisher. This is how he markets and sells, quote, "medical marijuana" to, quote, "patients" who are healthy enough to ski. I encourage you to read through the patient comments on that handout. It really does not look like these people have a medical illness. Quote, "Their earwax was most killer. The people who worked there said it tested insanely high in THC." This is the testimonial of a customer. Is this what Brookline will accept as medicine? No matter what assurances Dr. Balsam, Mr. Fisher, or his lobbyists can give, Brookline citizens and town meeting members should think for themselves and for their children. There is no way, there should be a way to provide pot to the truly sick. But this model is not it. No matter how we got here, medical marijuana is the law. But let's take seriously our responsibility to regulate its sale carefully and tightly with eyes wide open to the high risk of diversion. We must do this for the safety and health of our community and for the message it sends to our children. Thank you.
The floor is open for questions. Please. And if you would identify yourself.
Family Spiegel, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. I find the suggestion that Dr. Balsam looks forward to addiction or other illnesses or other dire effects so that it could apply for grants for its own use to be respectable. I ask Dr. Balsam to generate validity to that suggestion.
No, and honestly, I'm offended by it. I think people here know I've worked for the town for 17 years, and frankly, you can use your own judgment.
Thank you. If you would please hold that, and you have a minute if you need to say anything on the subject.
I just, Dr. Balsam's mission is drug control, and there is ample evidence with marijuana that has been sold as medicine in Colorado and California of the high risk of diversion. We already have an epidemic of pot use and abuse in Brookline High School. We cannot take this issue lightly. I certainly would hope that Dr. Balsam would not use his position. I don't believe that he would, but I think you have to look at the circumstances, and as I say, the conflict of interest troubles me.
Are there other questions? Yes, please.
Excuse me. I would just recommend that questioners use this microphone so that everyone can hear you. If you don't mind coming up, it's turned on so that you can ask your questions from here.
Thank you, Sean.
Hi, I'm Raymond Codera. I'm a town meeting member for Precinct 11. I'm just curious as to whether there are similar buffer zone regulations concerning places that sell alcohol, and how you would differentiate between marijuana dispensaries and those that sell alcohol. Both would fit everything that we're basically speaking about.
So let's start with you, since that.
I know of no buffer zones for alcohol.
Neither do I, and I think it's telling that there are no buffers. We definitely want to restrict alcohol from youngsters as we want to restrict marijuana from youngsters, and we have a very active campaign to do just that, and we're going to continue that campaign. We know that use of marijuana by youngsters can inhibit the proper development of their brain, and we want to make sure that they're not smoking marijuana. On the other hand, we want to make sure that patients who need this drug have access to it, and that's why I'm supporting Articles 6 and 7.
I'm Harry Friedman, President of the Town Meeting Members Association. If these articles do not pass, Brookline has a moratorium in place until June of 2014. After June of 2014, do you know, do we revert to the state model regulations, which would have the 1,000-foot and include daycare, or do we have no regulation?
I'm not sure, and I direct that to our legal counsel. I think it's likely we would have no regulation.
Do you have any comment?
No, I'm not confident what the default position would be. But the MDPH is 500 and does include daycares.
So Raymond, I'm going to try to speak up. I have two questions.
But the problem is the television audience. I'm sorry.
And you're still in the public forum field of the whole community. Why don't you have people lined up?
Not a bad idea.
I just have two questions. One is what forms, if there are any restrictions, regulations on the forms in which the marijuana can be sold? I'm particularly interested to know if it's going to look like a fun stuff. I think presentation, right, we have their whole marketing areas in the world, you know, lots of big business there, and how it appears. And then secondly, my question is, will there be any change in the way some of the health information that I know we already give to the students in the public schools will be addressed now that it is legal in this way? In other words, helping make the distinction that it is for people who are truly ill and that it's not about recreation, like just the damage that it can do, the brain science behind that. So if there are going to be changes in that.
May I?
Yes, please.
So in terms of the forms, there's very strict controls in the DPH regulations. It's not to be offered in anything that's considered candy or would target youngsters. Also, in terms of the signage around the dispensary, there's to be no signage except the name of the place. There's to be, you're not even allowed to be visible from the outside of what's going on inside. Only people who have cards will be allowed even into the dispensary. So there's many, many controls about what the forms of the marijuana will be. Now, there will be different choices for people. They will be able to consume it as a food, or as a bath salt, or possibly as a tincture. There are different ways that you can, in fact, we would encourage people not to smoke marijuana because smoking is not good for you, if you haven't heard. So there are other ways that you can use marijuana as a medicine without smoking it, and that'll be very important for us to enforce, and that's why the health department's going to be right on top of it, along with the police department. In terms of how we're dealing with the issue around kids, our group, we have a group in the high school that is working very hard on this issue, and they're supporting the TARP bill. The TARP bill is being considered right now, and what that would do is, it would, right now, there is little or no sanction for marijuana. It's a civil offense, and you don't even have to give your name if a cop stops you. So we would like to see that changed for youngsters or people under 21, so that it would be treated as alcohol. So it would be, you'd have to go into diversion program if you were caught with marijuana and you were under 21. We think the TARP bill is the answer to some of the concerns that Lisa has raised, not to stop sick people from getting their medicine.
Thank you. Would you care to comment?
Certainly, we can't forget that marijuana is still illegal in Massachusetts and federally. And there, the reality is, is that medical marijuana is a business, and there are medical marijuana millionaires and billionaires in California and Colorado. The edibles, as they're called, are made to taste good. It's a consumer product. It's going to taste good, and it's going to be packaged appealingly. It's a business, and there is, if you look at the models that we have, educate yourselves, folks, about what's going on in California and Colorado, and how pot is being diverted, and the fact that there is an epidemic of pot use and abuse. I can tell you stories from my sister who lives in California. It's just, it's commonplace. People pick up any kind of pot edible, they take it before they go to bed. My sister talked about a 60-year-old friend that was going through a divorce. She's depressed, she can't sleep, she takes pot edibles at night. It's like, no big deal. This concerns me greatly. This is a woman that should be seeing a doctor, a real doctor, and getting real medicine to treat her depression, not having some sort of pot edible to mask her serious medical condition.
May I respond to that?
Please.
Or is that outside of the?
I don't know. You're the moderator, so you know how the time goes.
It doesn't call for that, but I would think that would be appropriate.
Lisa has mentioned this business model several times, and in Massachusetts, we've specifically said that every dispensary and everyone applying to run a dispensary has to be a nonprofit. That's different than Colorado. That's different than California. What we've done is we've analyzed all of the other states, and we've taken the best and eliminated the stuff that's not working. So there's nobody making money in Massachusetts from marijuana dispensaries. Every dollar goes back into providing medicine for people who can't afford it. And that's the other thing we're requiring. We're requiring that people who can't afford it have access to the medicine as well. So I don't know where this business thing comes from with the lobbyists and all of that, but it's not from Massachusetts.
There, in the audience tonight, Mr. Fisher's in the audience tonight, and I simply have to say that there are nonprofit organizations that get very, very rich off donations. I think we all know that. I think we cannot turn a blind eye to the dangers that may be here. We have one chance to get it right. Let's not lose that opportunity. Let's regulate this very carefully. Let's make sure it only gets to the people that it should, but let's not assume that it won't.
I have a couple of things to say.
I'm sorry, but would you mind identifying yourself?
First of all, my name is Valencia Sparrow, and I have a couple of things to say. I grew up, my father was a police officer, specifically a narcotics officer. So I have mixed feelings about marijuana. And it is a drug, and at the same time, it does relieve pain. So, yeah, I think people that need it should be able to get it. There will be businesses popping up around it, all kinds of businesses. If you remember in the 70s, the head shops, the pipes, everything. Even though the sale of marijuana will be strictly monitored, the businesses around it may not be. And to me, that's the reality. At the same time, there are businesses that are popping up around all kinds of legal medication, pharmaceuticals, everything that we take.
I'm just going to call to your attention that questions are limited to a minute, and you're nearly there.
I am? Oh. Well, anyways, I just wanted to say that, you know, let the people that need it have it. I agree. And let it be monitored. And as far as the students in the school, the teenagers, they know what's going on. They're not stupid. They're not naive. They've seen everything. They probably have more than any one of us know about. It's just, don't have the centers near any schools. Make the people that need it travel for it.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure that was a question. I don't see one.
That wasn't a meeting, I mean, a minute.
Okay.
Do you want to comment?
No.
And do you need to comment? Okay. Very good. Please.
Larry Coff, Precinct 3. I have a question about how this will operate. If the state guidelines wanted buffer zones, Brookline, we feel we don't need buffer zones. We'll have more flexibility to make decisions. How does the planning board deny a permit when they're all allowed by special, this use is allowed by special permit in all the commercial areas? So it's not clear to me why we have more control when we don't have buffer zones and it's allowed in all the commercial districts. How are we going to deny this use?
Well, I wouldn't say we have more control, but what I would say is that there's a pretty sophisticated control process in place so that, let's say that the state does authorize the placement of a dispensary here. What will then happen is the folks who want to open the dispensary will have to go before the ZBA, the zoning board of appeals, and present what they want to do, and then there'll be public hearings on that. If they get the nod from the ZBA, then they will have to then go to the Board of Selectmen, who will have public hearings as well, and they will ask, just as they do for liquor stores, the health department, and the police, and all of the other departments, to analyze what the proposal is and to make recommendations for changes. So just because this passes doesn't mean that we will have a dispensary. There will still have to be much process in order to have the right dispensary in the right location for Brookline.
What is the basis of denial?
The question was, what is the basis of denial?
I'm sorry. The basis of denial could be that the operator doesn't pass muster with our police department. It could be that it doesn't, that they don't pass muster with our health department. It could be that the location doesn't pass muster with the Board of Selectmen. I mean, there are myriad.
On the basis of what, though? What objective criteria?
Well, I mean, it could be the health department, for example. It could be the fact that they don't adhere to, example, Article 10 of the state sanitary code for the police. It could be that they don't pass the background checks that will be required of them. So there, I would say, within the 64 pages of regulations, there's probably 100 different criteria aside from daycare center buffers that could be used to deny someone a permit. Plus, we will have the right every year to have them come in and make the case again that, for example, we could require that they have case again, that, for example, we could require that they have armed employees out front of their dispensaries, and if they don't do it, that, I'm not saying we should do it, but we could, and that would be one way to deny them if they wouldn't go along with what we asked them for. So there's, there's many, many steps along the way to require quite a lot of things for anybody who wants to open a dispensary. This just sets the table and allows it.
Thank you, Alan.
Yeah, well, I'd like to say that there are still many, many unanswered questions in the MDPH regulations. For example, we still don't even know how much pot an individual can purchase on a given day. They can just go from pot shop to pot shop across the state. That's still not tightened up. There's a lot of things that aren't tightened up, there's a lot of unanswered questions. I think that if we want to do this, we should do this as carefully and as thoughtfully as possible, bearing in mind the risks inherent with selling a drug in a retail environment. Again, I just, I'm concerned about kids. I'm concerned about kids, not the handful of adults that may have physical ailments, or that may just want to do it recreationally. I'm concerned about the message it sends to kids, and if you do some homework, look what's happening in Colorado, look what's happening in California, look at how, quote, "medical marijuana" is being sold, and marketed, and used, and abused. It's scary. I don't want that for Brookline.
It's half an hour.
Okay.
I have another question. Sorry. This is, you can tell I missed the Advisory Committee meeting on this one.
No, this is a cooperative.
Thank you, thank you.
No problem. Thanks for coming up.
I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 12, Amy Hummel. My other question was, and I don't know that anybody has the answer to it, but I am curious, is that if at some point the federal government, this becomes legal, a legal medicine under the federal regulations, will, I'm wondering if anyone's thought ahead about what will happen to these dispensaries? Do they become obsolete, and then we, people would just buy this at a pharmacy like they'd buy any other regulated medicine? Or, you know, is there something that would make that different? Because to me, that's, I would love to see this just in a pharmacy, like any other regulated medicine, that to me, that's, they're the people that should be dispensing, that's what they do as a business, and what will happen, assuming that at some point, I think it will, become legal federally.
And Alan, hold on just one minute.
I'd like to respond first, it's the first opportunity.
It's okay, I'm gonna.
Thank you. I agree with you. I think that that's what the citizens of Brookline and Massachusetts expected, that a drug would be sold in a pharmacy by people in white coats in a controlled environment. But the fact is, that wherever you buy pot, whatever batch you buy, it is not the same day to day, week to week, year to year. That's why doctors don't prescribe pot, they can only recommend for it. It's not a prescription, it's, it's, there's no FDA controls, there's no controls of any kind. Nobody knows what they're getting when they buy pot from a pot dispensary. So it's, it's basically the wild, wild west, no matter what kind of framework you want to put in it.
And you have up to two minutes.
Thank you. Well, what can I say? I think.
What can you say?
I think that we may require that pharmacists dispense marijuana in these dispensaries. That may be one of the requirements that we have, and it's being actively discussed right now. Of course, we would like it to be sold in a drugstore or pharmacy, but right now, there are, the FDA can't regulate it, because there are no tests that have been done to prove that it's safe and effective, as with other drugs. And let's face it, you know, you can buy OxyContin in a pharmacy, and I would submit to you that that's abused far more than marijuana by young people. So the fact is that there are many things that we can do. We're anxious to work with researchers at, we're in the medical mecca here. We have a group of researchers, scores of researchers, who want to work with us to demonstrate the efficacy of this product and this drug. And once we demonstrate that, then we will be able to normalize it and sell it in pharmacies. That's our goal, actually. We don't want to do it in dispensaries if we can do it in pharmacies, but right now, this is the only opportunity for sick people to get medicine.
Thank you. And it's now time for closing commentary, and each side will have one minute, and since we began with you, I'm going to begin over here.
I think I'll just pick up with what Dr. Ballsom said, and the fact is, we're simply not there yet. There are no FDA studies that show that you can sell this safely. Let's take the ingredients that are useful in marijuana, let's standardize them, and let's sell it as a drug. I think it's ludicrous. I understand, Doctor, that OxyContin, Oxycodone is a terrible, it's an epidemic, but more than OxyContin. Pot is being used by kids, it's, it's an epidemic at Brookline High School. We have to face that squarely, that is all of our responsibility as adults in this community, whether we have children in the school or not. And there are still too many unanswered questions, Dr. Ballsom said himself, there's still so much research to be done, and yet, we're going to open up a Pandora's Box by selling pot in retail stores out of candy jars, and think that that's medicine. It's not medicine, it's not standardized, you don't know what batch you're getting, and it's marketed as recreation.
Thank you. Alan.
Fortunately, not every country men's medical marijuana, in the same way we do. The state of Israel is in the forefront of regulating and studying marijuana, and they have demonstrated its efficacy, and they're using it medicinally in the ways that we would like to approach. So there is a model that we can follow. Over 70% of Brookline voted to support medical marijuana to help patients seek relief. The state Health Department estimates that up to 1% of the Commonwealth's residents could benefit from medical marijuana. That translates into scores of patients here in Brookline. These patients should not have to break the law to get relief from a medicine that can help them. Every board and commission that is considered warrant Article 6 and 7 has approved them most unanimously. There are multiple safeguards built into the present system, and we expect the nonprofit that opens a dispensary here would do an excellent job with our oversight. I hope the town meeting will support these warrant articles.
Very good. Thank you both very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Well done.
Could Selectmen Kenneth Goldstein and Town Meeting Member Jonathan Davis please take their places at the table? We'll now turn to a discussion of Article 10, which would reduce the required off-street parking for studio and one-bedroom units.
All right, so it's time for opening statements, and I'm going to begin with Kenneth Goldstein.
Great. Good evening, everybody, nice to see you, here to talk about Article 10. Article 10 arose out of a previous Article 10. There was, at the Spring Town Meeting in 2010, there was another Article 10, and it was a proposal for kind of a sweeping change in parking minimums. They wanted to, petitioners in that article wanted to reduce the parking minimums required in residential development. That means, not a maximum, but a minimum, the minimum amount of parking spaces that a property owner or developer has to provide when proposing new construction, or seeking any kind of a zoning relief. That article produced a lot of, a lot of comments, both positive and negative. The petitioners in that case had in mind some changes that were aimed at changing transportation use in the town. They felt that if there was less parking, there would be less cars, and less cars, less traffic, and that it was generally a positive change in term, from an urban planning point of view. A lot of people had problems with that. The result of Article 10 back in 2010 was that the moderator appointed a study committee. I had the privilege of serving on that committee. It was a committee that was composed of people with a number of different, you know, early assumptions about how the process works, so people as diverse as Joe Ross, and it was a precinct, a town meeting member with, you know, a jaundiced eye towards development, Elisa Jonas from Precinct 16, also someone who looks, tends to look skeptically at development. And then there were, you know, people who, I would say, were more open to ideas of development. So it was a very diverse body. This wasn't really about development, was the, was the point. The point was, it was about parking, and whether changing the parking requirements in this way would have a positive effect on the town, a negative effect on the town, or a neutral effect on the town. The, what that moderator's committee found out was, that this is an extremely complicated question, that being able to accurately predict what any change in parking, I'm just gonna need more than a minute, I'm afraid, Lee, but what any committee, what any change in parking does, has many different ramifications, and can have effects beyond what anyone can accurately anticipate. What the committee wanted to do was make sure that any change would do no harm to the town, that any change that was proposed would have a very safe assurance that we couldn't do any harm. As a reason, after going through this process for three years, and conducting a study, a survey among town residents that was well responded to, what the committee came up with is what they call the low-hanging fruit. The low-hanging fruit in the parking minimum debate is the parking that's required for one-bedroom and studio apartments in the town. We currently require two parking spaces for a studio, two parking spaces for a one-bedroom. The use patterns, and this has been confirmed by our survey, is that people use .43 parking spaces for a studio. That means that led, that only about a quarter of, less than a quarter of studio apartments have a parking, have a car at all. And for one-bedrooms, the number is approximately .7. So the effect of this, requiring to, you know, more parking than is being used, is that, A, we're not letting our transportation policy be expressed through our parking requirements, we're putting sort of an arbitrary and artificial control on the amount of parking. I'm so sorry, I need about 20 seconds more. And so the, and the effect of that is that property owners and developers who come with new proposals are avoiding building studio units and one-bedroom units. And they're doing that in a way that is artificial, uncalled-for, it's affecting the stock of smaller units in the town, that has its own repercussions, and it is, it's keeping us from being able to have some transportation policy expressed through our parking requirements. I will stop, there's a lot more to say, and.
I think you can count on your audience to ask appropriate questions. Thank you very much. Would you please?
Hi, folks, I'm Jonathan Davis, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the TMMA, and the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance for hosting this, and Sean for inviting me to speak. I do have, unfortunately, an insufficient number of handouts, given the attendance here, but I'll put them outside, and if you, as you walk out, you know, if you're able to grab any, please do, otherwise, email me, I'm in the yellow book for Town Meeting Members, and I'll see that you get a copy. Five years ago, in 2008, Brookline voters passed an override that was driven by the schools. At the time, it was felt that the regular school budget under the town-school partnership was too small to fund a new school program. Now, here we are in November of 2013, and in a few months, the voters will be presented with another school-driven override, this override to be much bigger. The new override will be due to the great increase in school population and the inability of the regular school and regular capital budgets, even after the 2008 override, to adequately house and adequately educate the burgeoning school population. To my knowledge, the great majority of voters in Brookline do not have children in the Brookline schools, and will never in the future have children in the Brookline schools. The parents of current and future schoolchildren are in the clear minority. I believe Article 10 will make it easier for developers to develop housing that will bring more school-aged children from outside Brookline into the Brookline schools, at a time when the Brookline schools are already bursting at the seams, and town government will be asking voters to approve the second school-driven override in six years. Imagine you're the parent of one or more school-aged children living in Boston, or Everett, or Chelsea, or Somerville, you work downtown or in the medical area, and you're eager to get your child into the Brookline schools, especially if you will not increase, or perhaps you will even reduce your commuting time. Wouldn't you jump at the chance? Article 10 will reduce onsite parking requirements for new buildings as a whole. Since developments often consist of a mix of units, the overall cost of the building will be less, because less onsite parking for the entire building must be provided. The developer's projected profit looks greater, and the developer will find it easier to get financing to build. Current zoning uses the size of a residential unit, one-bedroom, studio, two-bedroom, and so on, to commute, to compute the number of required onsite parking spaces for a building, but there's no requirement that spaces arithmetically computed with respect to studios or one-bedrooms must be sold to buyers of those units, or rented to tenants of those units. Requiring the onsite parking, whether more or less, is a cost for building the entire building, and allocating the rental or sale of particular spaces is up to the developer to maximize his profits. It's readily understandable that new two- and three-bedroom units will attract new families from outside Brookline, and bring additional children into the Brookline schools, but the same is also true for one-bedroom units. This isn't my idea. Two years ago, in the combined reports for the November 2011 Town Meeting, the Hancock Village Study Committee wrote that Chestnut Hill Realty's proposal to build new one-bedroom apartments would also likely attract new students from outside the district and contribute to overburdening the Baker School, and that's in, that's, you'll see that in the handout if you're able to get it. This year, in 2013, the B-Space Committee stated that local real estate brokers told the committee that families with children accept smaller-size housing, for example, families of four in one-bedroom units. That's also in the handout. It's also not hard to think of single parents being willing to squeeze with one child into new studio apartments just to get the child into the Brookline schools. I've heard it said that being against Article 10 is being against development. I don't think that's true. Article 10 makes residential development easier, but voting against Article 10 doesn't make residential development harder. Voting against Article 10 just leaves the existing zoning bylaw in place, and according to the report of the B-Space Committee, since the year 2000, the town has added more than 1,000 housing units. That's not anti-development. I hope I'll have more to say at the, at the end of this.
Great, you will, you'll get an opportunity at the end, and you can also respond to every question that comes forward. So now, questions, and if you would come to the mic. And please feel free to line up if there are more than one who'd like to ask questions. It's a very quiet room. Ah, good, we have a taker.
Tommy Vitolo, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. There's no doubt that any housing that's built, whether it's three fam, three bedrooms or studios, you build enough units, you're going to get more school-aged children. There's no doubt that if we build 1,000 studio apartments, at least one of them's going to have a school-aged children in it. My question is, for a given developable lot, whether it's a renovation or an existing lot, and it has a certain amount of square feet, it has a height, setback restrictions far, and so forth, and you could fit X number of studios, or Y number of two-bedrooms, which of those developments, given all of these trade-offs, is going to result in more school-aged children enrolling in the schools? And do we have any data to back that up, or is it pure speculation?
And I think we'll start with Jonathan Davis.
I don't know of, I don't know of any development that is limited to studios. I think that, I think that if Article 10 had been, had been changed, or were amended, so that the.
the parking available for studios would be available only in buildings that had studios in them, then maybe that would be comparing apples to apples. But buildings generally have a kind of a mix. And my point is simply that reducing the cost of the overall building, which is what Article 10 would do, is going to, I believe, incentivize the construction of buildings and I believe that the more buildings that are built, that's easier to build them, you're going to get an increase in the school population.
Thank you.
Thanks. I also had the privilege of serving on the B-Space Committee, so I did hear what there is to know about population and particularly how it, how it, our school population and how it might relate to development. I also spent 15 years on the planning board. When I first started hearing about our school enrollment crisis, I started, had some deep introspection, had we, were we killing the goose that laid the golden egg, but with development that's gone on in this town over the last, over the term that I've been involved in it? And I was somewhat relieved to find out that the answer to that is no, that our school enrollment problem is not related to development. Our school enrollment, and the proof of that is in the U.S. Census, which just came out. The total population of the town of Brookline has risen by less than 1,000 people over the, since the last census, which means that new development is not adding to our population. We're not overbuilding. What we're doing is finding that the demographics are changing, that more families with school-aged children are coming. The answer to Tommy's question is no, we don't know how, what the average number of school-aged children in a one bedroom is compared to the larger ones. But I suggest that it doesn't require a study to really understand this question. It's a simple matter of logic. A three-bedroom unit, a two-bedroom unit is far more likely to have children, school-aged children in it than a one bedroom or studio apartment. I confess, there are anecdotes and there are true anecdotes of people crowding into one bedrooms and crowding into studios, and it will continue to happen. I don't want to imply that it won't, but it's far more likely to happen and you're going to have, far more likely to have more children in the larger units.
Thank you. Next question.
My name's Diana Spiegel. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 2 and on the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance Board. I had a couple of comments and a question. One of the comment is, I think John Davis or perhaps Ken referred to this as being about new development, and unfortunately, I think when this was designed, people were thinking about new development, but then it turned out, there was no way to distinguish really between the parking requirements for new development and the parking requirements for changes to old development. So really, it applies to both and therefore, one concern is that it could mean a lot of, say subdivision of apartments in older buildings with sort of unknown impacts there. And my, one of my questions is of, really, I think it probably goes to Ken in particular, regarding the survey that was sent out about current parking usage. Did the survey distinguish between people who live in older buildings, many of which actually have no onsite parking, and people who live in new buildings that were built with the newer parking requirements? Because obviously, somebody who lives in an older building where they moved in knowing that there was no parking space is less likely to have a car or several cars.
Thank you very much. You can, you can stay and ask a follow-up if you need to, but please.
Yeah, and the answer to your question, Diana, is no. The survey was a survey designed by citizens, not by professionals, and we did not go into those tall weeds of breaking that down. But I do want to address a couple of questions, points that you made though. First, that I want to make a point that I think is important for everybody to understand. We talked to developers in the moderators committee. Developers aren't sitting back and waiting to find out what the parking requirement is before they decide to build a new property or to develop a new property. They, they deal with it, as opportunities present itself, as a new property comes on the market, they go for it. They design a development based around what the zoning bylaw is and they take the path of least resistance, which means if a special permit is required for something and they can design without getting a special permit, without getting zoning relief, that's what they do. So currently, they're developing for two and three bedrooms because they know that they don't have to seek relief to do otherwise. I'm sorry Diana, you had another point too that I wanted to address, but I don't have enough seconds here and hopefully it'll come up again.
Actually, I just remembered what my other point was and it actually wasn't a question, but it was just a comment that a couple of people, and I won't identify them by name, but have told me that they specifically know of people who have gotten studios or one bedroom apartments in Brookline so that they could have, they don't necessarily live there, but so they could have an address here so that their kids could go to the Brookline schools. That's the kind of thing, it's hard to verify, but I know it happens.
I'm sure that exists. Those are outliers, those are not, that's not the norm, that's not how property is being used 90% of the time by my estimation.
Let's just hear from the other side for a minute. Thank you.
No, I don't, I don't have any.
No comment.
I don't have any comments too.
Ah, very good. Please. And you are?
Larry Coff, Precinct 3. I'd like to thank Ken and the members of the Parking Committee for the incredible amount of work they've done on this topic. It seems to me that parking here is being used for purposes which it was not intended, that the bylaws constructed to have some sense of rationality and to have requirements that relate to reality. We now have more information which supports the fact that we're requiring much more parking than is required. So I'm wondering whether, in order to try and build support for what is to me a very reasonable and logical change, whether the Parking Committee and the opposition that Jonathan Davis is representing would consider in special designated areas, Coolidge Corner the areas, we're trying to encourage appropriate development, whether one would consider in these designated areas allowing, reducing the parking requirements for studios and one bedrooms to reflect what the Parking Committee has determined to be the requirement.
Thank you.
I think, I think I have a few, a few responses Larry, to your, to your point. First of all, I think that when you're dealing with parking, when you're dealing with zoning, you're dealing with, in effect, the society as a whole. As the Parking Committee apparently determined, there are a lot of tendrils, there are a lot of aspects to parking and effect, and changing parking. And I think one of the, one of the aspects happens to be that we have an expanding school population and we have to figure out a way of, of dealing with adequately educating them and at the same time, not putting the taxpayers on a rapidly increasing treadmill by changing the zoning. I also think that if, if you have, if you have suggestions about locating reduced parking in particular areas of the town, you know, I think that that's something that anybody would be interested in looking at and seeing the language and seeing the concept, but Article 10 doesn't do that. It's a scattershot and the effect, I think, is going to be felt town-wide as it attracts students from outside the district.
Thank you. And we are going to try to keep it to just the two additional questioners so that we, that we keep more or less in time. So, pardon me, do you have a comment?
Very quickly, I think that the basic concept of two parking spaces for a studio and two parking spaces for a one bedroom is something that we can do away with townwide. It's clearly beyond the usage patterns. It's clearly not designed at addressing transportation and parking policy. It's clearly designed for a different purpose, which is to limit development, make things harder for developers, but I suggest to you, if you look at the dimensional requirements of the town, we already do that with FAR, with setbacks, with open space, with height restrictions and, you know, 10 different ways that are appropriate to controlling development. We don't need to affect our transportation policy in the same way.
Thank you. Next question.
Harry Friedman, town meeting member from Precinct 12. Do we know what other towns that are somewhat like Brookline do for their parking requirements for studios and one bedrooms and how do we compare to them?
We do know, Harry, but I'm not equipped to cite the chapter and verse on it. I can tell you that we did it. Alyssa Jonas is here, she'll remember, but we're far beyond what any other town that we looked at does.
I would.
Cambridge has .8 across the board. They also have overnight parking. And Newton is two parking spaces across.
She should cover the nine. Yeah, she, you should either, if you're going to speak at length, could you come up? Thanks, sorry.
Alyssa Jonas was on the moderators committee, so she can, she can speak on this.
I'll tell you, we looked at a lot of data. The two towns that we looked at, I spoke to Newton directly, Cambridge is .8 and that's across the board and, but they also have overnight parking in the streets, right? And Newton is two across the board, they don't differentiate by bedroom sizes. However, Newton has, I think for their two families, they just seem to assume that for any two or three families, that you would have two spaces for every unit and Newton has the size to do that and they have no issues with that. With multifamilies, there are less multifamilies there than there are in Brookline, but whenever a multifamily building is being built, they almost always go to the, to which, at the planning board or whatever entity they're going to, or the zoning board of appeals, and discuss special permits and usually within, as part of the special permits they're getting, they usually request an adjustment for their parking for the multifamilies, but they do have to show that there's alternatives available. For example, if there's something in commercial areas, if there's a building that can then provide parking, they, if they have other buildings that are residential that, that also can provide parking, they give that kind of give and take. So I think multi, they have more flexibility to change their parking. But Brookline isn't like either of these two towns, so it's hard to make it equivalent. I will say that I was very hesitant to do it because I am concerned about developers.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. Oh, that's all right. Thank you very much.
But I do support this.
Yeah, well, it's unified during the winter.
Right. Newton does have on-street parking for, except in the winter.
Yes, before, before we take the next question, I'm going to ask for a response over here.
No, I think, I think Lisa made, made the point that I was going to make and particularly about Cambridge has 24/7 overnight resident parking.
Very good, thank you. Next question.
Thank you. Stanley Spiegel, town meeting member from Precinct 2. I worry about unintended consequences. I remember back in 2000, before the current minimum were put in place, the overnight lots in town were full to the gills, there were long waiting lists, there were signs on every street corner saying, "Do anything for a parking space." There was great pressure on the overnight ban. I don't want those days to return and I'm not sure that the data gives me any confidence that those days would not return. I do not see how the current parking requirements have caused an issue that we need to do something about. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. And the potential for unintended consequences and for harm to the town, quite apart from increasing school enrollments, I believe, is something that we should not discount. It takes a two-thirds vote for good reason, we have to be darn sure, and I await responses as to how you folks react to the concerns I'm concerned about.
Very good, thank you. And we're going to start with Jonathan?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to, my mind was racing as Stanley was speaking. Give me, yeah. I think, I mean, I've run a business and I know from running, well, it's a kind of a business, it's a law firm, and although you probably don't think that that's much of a business, but it is. And I know from experience that it's a mistake to try to run too lean, to try to run your business too lean, to have too few employees, you may be able to get by with fewer employees, you may be able to get by with lesser space, but a time comes when you're going to regret that and you need to have some redundancy built into the system. You need to have more than what current demand seems to indicate. It doesn't go on forever. So I think that that's, I think that that's really something important to keep in mind. The other thing, and this is pure speculation on my part, I concede it, I think that we are in a relatively short period of time when the interest of the public in acquiring cars is going down. And I think that as, in 15 to 20 years, this is a guess, we're going to have passenger cars and vans that are going to be almost exclusively hybrids or all-electric, and I think there'll be less resistance among younger people, particularly as they get older and acquire families who need vans, to be acquiring cars themselves.
Thank you very much. Please.
Thanks. Stanley, and by the way, I must say before anything, I appreciate the high level of debate that's gone on with Jonathan and Stanley. We know a lot of the people follow the TMMA listserv discussions that have gone on. Couple of things to address your point about pressure, the pressure on parking. First, 75% of the respondents to the, to the survey that was done reported that they were satisfied with their parking and with the parking that was available to them. That shows a pretty strong inclination that we're not teetering on the edge, we're not in a crisis mode here, is how I would put it, where we can't see and test where the parking was. One of the terms that the moderators committee used repeatedly was baby steps. This is, and I've also described this as low hanging fruit. There's, we're doing something that is very unlikely to become impactful. Change in the demand for parking, as Jonathan just points out, and I got to agree with him on this, is because of a demographic change. Parking is becoming less in demand because less people are using cars. I have a 16-year-old daughter and when I was 16 years old, I couldn't wait to get my license, couldn't wait to get my first car. Well, the kids today aren't driving the way we are, especially the ones in Brookline. They cherish their urban, the urban environment here, they use the T. And we can talk about Zipcar and we can talk about bicycling, we can talk about all other kinds of things, it's just not the use pattern anymore. I don't think it's likely to change. Jonathan, if it does change, you know what? Two-thirds majority of town meeting will bring it back up. If it does change, I don't think it's going to come up to the point where we need two parking spaces for a studio.
But I got to ask you, if 20, 75% are satisfied, that still leaves 25% who are unhappy and that's a lot of demand.
I get that, but if I think, if we heard that 50% or above were unhappy, I think we could conclude that we don't have a lot of room to play with there. We do have, we do have room to test it.
And we have our second last speaker.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity, Richard Wynn, Precinct 2. I have a comment and a question to my own comment and then an answer to my own comment and then a follow-up question. So, if you followed that, you're doing well so far.
If you can manage all of that within a minute, you're all good.
Yeah, so most of the developers I know are not shy people and I really don't understand why they wouldn't just ask for a variance if they don't currently like our zoning laws. And I assume the answer to that question is that, well, it's really easier just to stay within the zoning laws and that there are zoning restrictions on size, et cetera. And the real problem is, is that our zoning laws don't always apply. As you know very well, there's the 40B, which overrides our zoning considerations. And the 40B however, does allow considerations of parking and traffic to be part of the discussion. And so that's my concern here, is that we would be giving away an. an important component in dealing with those issues.
Please, Kenneth.
Yes, thank you. Thanks. You brought up two points that I was going to address in my closing remarks. One is Hancock Village, and especially for Lisa. Lisa came into the process mostly concerned about how this might affect Hancock Village. Well, Hancock Village is not going to be affected by this because Hancock Village is being proposed as a 40B. A 40B is immune from our bylaws and our zoning bylaws, and immune particularly from parking. I'll add to that that one of the main problems with the proposal we're seeing from Chestnut Hill Realty at Hancock Village is that there's too much surface parking, that there's too much open space being lost for parking needs. So, you know, if it were to be built under the present bylaw, and which they can do a great deal by right there, you would find that parking, we would want to see them reducing the parking for studios and for one bedrooms if they were part of the plan. Which brings me to the next part of your problem, your next part of your question. And that is, you know, why don't developers just go ahead and seek variances? You know what? They don't have to seek a variance. We have a provision in our bylaw currently where you can apply for a special permit to reduce parking minimums. And it's done sometimes, but it's usually done in instances, and I know this from 15 years on the planning board. It's done in instances where the developer, the property owner, is coming anyway for other forms of relief. If the only thing that they're seeking is to reduce parking, they would just as soon stay away from the six-to-12-month processes involved in getting zoning relief and build to the path of least resistance. That's my experience as...
Thank you, Kenneth. Jonathan?
I just would like to comment that the special permit approach is available. It is there. If developers want to use it, it is available for them to use. The selectmen actually had something to say back two years ago about 40B in connection with Hancock Village, when the selectmen were strongly recommending the imposition of a neighborhood conservation district on Hancock Village. And they had interesting things to say about not paying much attention to 40B in terms of being intimidated by it, because if it's going to happen, it's going to happen. It's in the handout. I think historically, it's worth taking a look at if you get a chance to see the handout.
Thank you. So now to our closing comments. And since we began with Kenneth, we will now begin with Jonathan.
Okay. Couple of just really quick points. I've heard it said that Article 10 will create housing for the elderly. But if that were the purpose of Article 10, then Article 10 would require that new buildings cannot take advantage of reduced parking unless occupancy of studios and one bedrooms is limited to the elderly. But Article 10 doesn't do that. In fact, Article 10 doesn't get anything back for the town by letting developers make use of reduced parking. In summary, I think it would not be in good faith to ask voters for a new school-driven override to deal with the increasing school population if just a few months before, a Town Meeting were to pass Article 10 that would bring more children into the Brookline schools. This would be the second school-driven override in six years. I hate to imagine what the voters, most of whom do not have children in the public schools and who will never in the future have children in the public schools, will have to say about that. I think that if you have children in the Brookline schools or if you favor the next school-driven override, you should be going to the voters, that is, Town Meeting members here, should be going to the voters with clean hands and voting no action on Article 10.
Thank you. Jonathan frames this discussion in terms of an override, in terms of development. And I've said this a few times already, and I'll say it again. Development is coming. Whether we change this bylaw, we don't change this bylaw. This is not going to make it possible to develop properties that aren't currently developable. All it's going to change is, one, the ability to address parking and transportation policy as part of our bylaw. And, two, it has a kind of a happy side effect of making it more feasible to develop one-bedroom and studio apartments, making our housing stock more mixed and more appropriate for more people. That might result in more opportunities for seniors. It might result in more opportunities for young professionals. It might result in more opportunities for people who can't afford a two- and three-bedroom but can afford a one-bedroom. We don't know what the results of, we can't accurately predict what the skew is going to be and who's going to occupy these new units, or if any new units will come about. But what we do know is that two parking spaces for a studio and two parking spaces for a one-bedroom is way beyond what is necessary and what is needed. And changing that incongruity is good for the town, a small step to take with almost no chance of an adverse impact from it.
Thank you, Kenneth, and thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you all.
Thank you again. And we'll now turn to a discussion of Article 16, which pertains to the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission. So if the speakers on either side of that question could come forward and take a seat at the table. Your names are being placed there now. And we'll begin consideration of that article as soon as everyone can take a seat. Thank you.
And are the other two speakers here? Good.
Thank you. A minute and forty-five.
Yes.
Okay, is that all right?
Very good. So, welcome to the third discussion of the evening. And again, the two discussions previously have been very respectful. And looks like it's going to be a very interesting evening. We now have Article 16 to be considered, Human Relations/Youth Resources Commission and Diversity. And I'd like to go ahead and start with the Pro side. So I believe Arthur Conquest is speaking first.
No, I'm not.
Oh, I'm sorry, Marielle Sal is speaking first.
Good evening. Mariella Ames, petitioner of Article 16. I don't know if you have had the chance to read the article. If not, I can tell you, the reason this article is being presented is to ask the selectmen to make the necessary steps to appoint qualified people of color to the commission who have demonstrated their commitment to the work that the commission is to do. You are going to hear directly from them. One is Mr. Conquest, who has been for decades advocating for precisely the kinds of issues that the commission should be addressing. Mr. Cruz Sanabria is another applicant who has shown incredible commitment, has attended more meetings than many actual members of the commission in the past year. One of the biggest issues that I see our town has, our town as a community and as the administration, is lack of diversity in the administration of the town. Several times, we hear, "There are no qualified people of color who apply for these positions. We don't have a good turnout." Well, we have qualified people of color. And I'm so sorry to have to insist of color. It is something that I would very much like not to talk about and get to the point where color doesn't really matter. But here, we are really far from there, from that level. So we do have to address diversity. We do have to address color. And in this case, we do have the applicants who very much deserve to be members of this commission. I'd like to allow the applicants themselves to speak and you to have the chance to meet them. I can say a lot, lot more, but I have no time. Mr. Conquest?
Good evening. Arthur Wellington Conquest III, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. I'm one of three individuals who have applied for membership to the Human Relations Commission, but specifically not mentioned in the warrant article number 16. I've read over the internet and heard all kinds of uninformed and backwards misinformation about an email I received from the Town Meeting Moderator, which I in turn passed on to the petitioners and no one else. The email said, and I quote, "Whenever you wind up, wherever you wind up on the speakers list, and based on your last presentation to Town Meeting on the issue, I'm constrained to warn you about your remarks this time around. I will not object to your characterizing our community as racist if you believe that to be the case. However, I will not," and it's underlined "not," "allow you to label any particular person or board, including the selectmen, as racist. Nor will I allow you to characterize opponents of Article 18 as engaging in racist conduct. I hope that you will temper your presentation accordingly and avoid our having a confrontation at Town Meeting." Unquote. The moderator's actions, in my opinion, is against the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, as I have researched the Commonwealth's Declaration of Rights and the town's bylaws. Second, in my opinion, it is racial profiling, since I'm the only Town Meeting member who has received this email from the moderator. I intend to go before Town Meeting and speak my mind. And if it includes any accusation about racism or individuals who are involved in racist acts, be it the Board of Selectmen or anyone else, then I'll face whatever responses that come my way at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sanabria?
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Cruz Sanabria. I live in Brookline, have three children, who have been educated in the Brookline school system. I was general manager of Matthews English Muffin. I'm a teacher now. And I'm a disabled combat veteran wounded in action. I am interested in being appointed to the Human Relations Youth Resource Commission. And I'm one of three mentioned in Article 16. I am bilingual and have been told stories of mistreatment that have occurred in this town to others, both in Spanish and English. I understand their frustration, since I have been mistreated too, which has caused me to apply as a volunteer in the Human Relations Youth Resource Commission. My youngest daughter, who's a senior at Brookline High School now, received a comment just last June that was unbecoming of a teacher. My daughter said, with a witness there, that she is going to visit some family abroad. So the teacher said, and I quote, "To bring drugs back." Such insensitive comments has no place in our school system or anywhere in Brookline. I see the need for a commission to improve our cultural competency across the town. You as representatives have a say and shouldn't be bystanders. No one should. Thank you.
And thank you all. Please. Mr. Sandman?
Hi, I'm Mike Sandman, excuse me. Thank you, pardon. Representing the Advisory Committee in this case, I am not opposed to Article 16 per se, but I'm here to speak in support of the amended version approved by the Advisory Committee. Article 16 is a non-binding resolution urging the selectmen to fill open seats on the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission. The article, as submitted by the petitioners, urged that the selectmen appoint three specific applicants, including Cruz and Arthur, I believe, for seats on the commission. The Advisory Committee did not want to recommend specific applicants. We substituted a recommendation that all open seats on the commission be filled by May 2014, and that the selectmen should include residents from diverse backgrounds. The petitioners continue to prefer their version of the resolution, but the only substantive difference is their inclusion of three specific individuals and the Advisory Committee's decision not to include specific individuals. The Human Relations Youth Resources Commission was created in 1970. Since 1970, our view of what constitutes a disadvantaged minority has expanded substantially. And some of the responsibilities assigned to the commission in 1970 have been taken over by other departments. In May 2013, the Town Meeting asked for a report on whether and how staff support and the underlying bylaw governing the commission should be revised. And the Selectmen's Committee on Diversity was appointed to make that recommendation back to Town Meeting by this coming May. The bylaw that created the commission calls for 15 members. In April 2012, there were 12 members. In January 2013, the selectmen decided not to fill open positions on the commission because the role and perhaps the size of the commission seemed likely to change once Town Meeting received the Selectmen's Committee's report. Subsequently, several members of the commission resigned, leaving seven active members today out of 15. So the commission has been unable to function due to a lack of a quorum. Discrimination against minorities may not be as obvious or as blatant as it was in 1970, but it certainly still exists. And I think Cruz's relation to us of the comment made by a teacher is a perfect example of that, unfortunately. The commission still has important work to do. To do that work, at a minimum, the commission needs a quorum. Ideally, it should have members who can represent all of the groups the Commonwealth has resolved to protect, including women, gays and lesbians, immigrants, Asians, Latinos, and African-Americans. The selectmen who spoke at the Advisory Committee hearings on Article 16 emphasized that there was never any intent to leave the commission unable to operate. They expressed concern, they just didn't anticipate the resignations that have created the current situation. They expressed concern that they might have difficulty finding enough applicants to fill all of the open positions on the commission, given that its future composition and mission haven't been settled and won't be until May at the earliest. But as of late October, there were seven or more applicants for positions on the commission. Twenty-four of the 25 members of the Advisory Committee who were present and voting voted against recommending that three specific people be appointed to the commission because it sets a precedent of encroaching on the selectmen's authority and on their responsibilities. The Advisory Committee thought that the selectmen should exercise that authority and take that responsibility by bringing the commission up to full strength, and that they should seek diversity in its new appointees. We, on the Advisory Committee, want to see the commission get back to work, and we believe that the Advisory Committee's version of Article 16 sends that message. that the Advisory Committee's version of Article 16 sends that message.
Thank you both very much. If there are questions, would people step to the mic and begin with identifying yourselves?
That was easy.
Oh, don't be quick.
Dan Saltzman, 62 White Place. I'm just curious if there's, is there really only one substantive difference between the Advisory Committee's recommendation and the actual warrant article? If that's the case, what is the problem with the recommendation for it to be simply that the seats are filled as opposed to by specific people?
Would one of you care to take that question? And we will have both sides respond.
Let me just say very quickly, and I hope that if others have a point that they want to make. When the warrant article was written, and I, you know, I could be confused about my dates, but at the time, there were only three of us who were being recommended. And it was after that that other residents or Town Meeting members who signed up or who volunteered to become part of the commission. But at the time, it was only the three of us, which is why our names were put forward. And when I say our names, just in terms of, we were three, and they chose not to identify us specifically. But it wasn't like, you know, there were seven people and they chose the three of us and wanted to leave four people off in terms of being identified. There was no, you know, sort of hidden plan for us to bring us out forward and leave everybody else like Kay, who I see standing there as another member who is applied.
Arthur, I think Cruz would also--
Yes, and another thing is that every month that we would come to meetings, it seems like something changed. The language is changing, the process is changing, the procedures are changing. It seems like everything was changing for the convenience of the same game in town, so that doesn't change. So, you want to say maybe there was an invisible obstacle there?
If I may--
You have 30 seconds. Yes.
The heart of Article 16, really, in my view, is the appointment of qualified people of color, who, again, deserve to be, because our problem in the town is our race relations. There are many other problems, but we do have the problem of race relations. We do have the problem of lack of diversity. We have 40 years with not a single person of color at the level of department head, and that already tells you that we have a problem. The lack of diversity in, across the workforce is because we don't acknowledge it. We are unable to appoint people of color whose expertise is in race relations to a commission tasked to deal with race relations.
Thank you very much, Maricela.
Well, the answer to your question specifically is, I believe that's the only substantive difference. Quite honestly, I didn't hear anything that I disagree with or that the Advisory Committee is disagreeing with. We suggest, and our language says, "Town Meeting urges the Board of Selectmen to take the necessary steps to appoint a full complement of members to the commission, preferably including residents from diverse backgrounds and areas of expertise, so that a quorum can be gathered with reasonable certainty, while acknowledging that the commission's mission and structure may be changed as a result of the pending report from the Selectments Committee on Diversity." So, we are looking for the selectmen to appoint people from diverse backgrounds, including people of color, but we want the selectmen to take their authority and responsibility seriously, and we don't feel it's Town Meeting's role to name or appoint a specific individual. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Cornelia Vanderzil, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 15, and I am one of the people who has subsequently put my name in, as a candidate for membership of the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission. As you can see, I don't represent some of the diversity that the people would like to see in town, and that's why I hesitated to do it originally. And in March, I was told by the Board of Selectmen, and not just me, it was in a public meeting, and they had a statement that they put on the board that they were holding these membership to the commission because it was, everything was in flux. Several times, some of us, me included, spoke and said, "Look, it's time to go ahead and fill these positions because the work can't be done that this commission's supposed to do." And I also want to say, I appreciate all the work that everyone's put into this, and I hope we can come to some resolution here. I think the Board of Selectmen have not done their job here, and I don't unfortunately really have a question, but I just want to say that I only applied because I saw in the tab that they were actually accepting--
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And that's why the rest of us applied.
And our next person?
Hi, Brooks Ames. I'm actually one of the petitioners. I wanted to ask Mr. Sandman what he makes of the moderator's email to Mr. Conquest.
And for the record, I'm not that moderator.
She is not.
A moderator, not that moderator.
Well, I think Arthur has a right to speak his mind, and I would encourage him to engage in civil discourse as opposed to uncivil discourse, but nonetheless, he has a right to speak his mind.
Thank you.
And I am going to allow the other side to comment, since that was, every question is addressed, Poe and Khan.
Sure.
And you can choose amongst yourselves. You have up to two minutes to reply.
To reply to the question--
Yes.
About--
That's correct.
That was just presented by Brooks?
That's correct.
Thank you. Well, it was very interesting to learn that somehow the only person who received this was Mr. Conquest, and no one else, not the rest of the petitioners, but also not Town Meeting members. And Mr. Conquest is a Town Meeting member, so I did take it as a repression of free speech. And it really makes me feel quite upset that only one person gets such a letter, or such repression, if you will.
Others, one minute left?
Okay, one minute?
One minute.
Okay, I'll take 15 seconds. Okay. As I said to the Board of Selectmen, whatever, maybe two weeks ago, my mother would not allow me to be disrespectful to people, okay? No one sees me ever being disrespectful. I would love to be, I am a role model for all children, and disrespecting individuals is not in my repertoire. And I just want to add that the moderator, at the last Town Meeting, the spring Town Meeting, tried to stop me from speaking, and he said in an email, which I have, "He thought I was going to say something. He thought I was going to say something that was inappropriate." And he also says that in the same email that I read to you tonight, "I just didn't feel that I needed to present that." But thinking that I'm going to say something and actually hearing that I say something are two totally different things. And again, I have a constitutional right to speak my mind. That's the law of the land, United States Constitution, and no one is above that, except the people. Thank you.
If I may, I don't know if I have a few seconds.
Five seconds.
Sure.
Five seconds it is.
There has been, for some reason, a reaction to say, to warn people when we are going to deal with either Article 16 or we are going to address issues of race relations. For some reason, there's a need to have this warning, which I personally find completely unnecessary, but somehow it is there time and time again. My request is really for you to focus on the message and the issue, not who delivers it, and not how you feel about the person who's delivering it, not how you feel personally, if individually offended, or how uncomfortable it is, the issue being raised. And I think that gets so much in the way of addressing, acknowledging the problem.
Thank you, Maricela. Thank you very much. Next question?
Yes. Martha Gray, Precinct 11. Comment question. I'm flummoxed by the situation that we find ourselves here in Brookline, that we have, in this case, several people who want to be on the board, who can bring their voices, their experience, and can help us push ourselves forward to do the important and really difficult work that needs to be done in Brookline, so that we can be the community that we say we are. And I'm, in any meeting that I've ever been to about the commission, I'm just totally confounded by why we wouldn't just immediately say to these people who want to give their time, their energy, their experience, and their love of the town, the opportunity to work with us. And I can say that as a member of a multiracial family here in Brookline, my kids grew up here, there is lots of racism. We work together, we try to address it, but if we don't have leaders and community members working together and helping us move out of our zones of comfort, we will not be the community that we say we are and that we really need to be. So, on behalf of myself, my family, and our community, I want to thank you for putting yourselves forward, and I do hope we can work together to put you onto the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Would you like to ask a question?
Yes.
All right, please.
Do I have to? Okay.
Would you like the mic?
You can use this mic.
Very good.
Well, it's more of a comment than a question. I'd like to say, yes, well, first of all, I'm Valencia Sparrow, and I am a candidate to be on this commission also. And I'd like to say, yes, when we speak of race, it makes people uncomfortable. When we speak of color, we're uncomfortable. But underneath that color, we're all human, and we face the same problems. And what we're talking about is getting along and making things equal. Now, my question is, and the selectmen are going to hate me for this, but is there anything in this city that, like, is there checks and balances on the selectmen and on the Town Council? That's it? On, you know, on what they do and their functions?
Thank you for your question. Each side has two minutes to respond, and I'm going to start with Mr. Sandman.
Yeah, we are collectively, we, the voters, are collectively checking, we are the ones who select the selectmen and remove them if we feel like that's appropriate.
Up to two minutes.
No, that, we, Town Meeting, even in this resolution, this is not a binding resolution as submitted or as amended. And I will say, Nancy Daly and Betsy DeWitt both came to the hearings of Selectmen DeWitt, Selectmen Daly, both came to the hearing that the Advisory Committee held on this. And one of the things that we heard was, well, a reminder that it's a non-binding resolution and that the selectmen have the right and responsibility to, or the right to, you know, to do what they want in this particular case. What we want them to do is to exercise their authority and their responsibility, to do the right thing.
Up to two minutes.
Thank you. I'm not sure where to start, but first, I'm going to take this. To begin with, as Mr. Sandman just now acknowledged, this is a resolution. It is not binding. It is urging the selectmen to take an approach that we, as a community, think is the way to go. It does not order them to do anything. It cannot. They, by law, have to make the appointments. What varies in his, in the version of the Advisory Committee and the version of the, the original version, is that difference, that we are telling them, asking them, urging them to acknowledge that there are these applicants who deserve to be in the commission. We, as members of the commission who have been working in it, are attesting to their valuable contributions. Also, I want to say that the combined reports, if you have received them, do not really have the comments that we, as petitioners, have made in three different occasions, attending three different meetings, to the Subcommittee of the Advisory Committee and the full Advisory Committee. And I have been saying here what they are. One of the things that needs to be reminded, too, is that the bylaws of the Human Relations Commission, we are being told that they are being in the process of getting changed via the Selectments Committee, Diversity Committee, but those recommendations need to be approved by Town Meeting. I want to remind you also that that committee does not have any legitimate member from the Human Relations Commission--
Thank you, Maricela. There'll be closing remarks in just a second. So, thank you. I think that's the end of our question period, and we're going to move on to closing. And since we started with Arthur in your group, Maricela's group, the first time, we're going to go ahead and let Michael Sandman close first.
So, unless, and I think it's very unlikely, but unless both the petitioners' version of Article 16 and the Advisory Committee's amended version are rejected by Town Meeting, and I certainly hope that won't happen, one way or another, Town Meeting will be asking the selectmen to fill eight empty positions on the commission. The Advisory Committee's resolution, in that regard, is actually broader than the petitioners' version, in that we want all of the positions, all eight positions, to be filled, not just the appointment of the three individuals that have been specified by the petitioners. The Advisory Committee took that position because we believe that, number one, Town Meeting should not be selecting people for boards and commissions. We feel like that is the responsibility of the selectmen, and, number two, we want the selectmen to be responsible, to exercise that authority in a proper and complete way. That is the reason that we amended the motion as you have it in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I just--
So, you have one minute combined? So, just think about that, how you'd like to split that up.
Well, first, to clarify, the original article, which is still the motion of the petitioners of Article 16, does ask that the selectmen make subsequent appointments of qualified applicants to the commission beyond the three outstanding applicants who have been waiting for appointments since March of this year. We do want to address the problem that we see very much in need, and despite 40 years having passed, we deem very much valid today to address disparities that happen across the town, not just the town workforce, not just with the town, the administrative-- town, the administration, but across the community. And it is pretty clear to me that, that the responsibilities of the Human Relations Commission are very valid. And I speak of the affirmative action part, I speak about discrimination and complaints, education, and youth resources, advocacy for them.
Thank you very much, Maricela. Please.
I beg your pardon, I didn't realize I had another.
No, no.
I've already spoken.
Thank you.
I'm happy to speak again, but I don't really think it's that's.
So.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sandman.
We'll now turn to the last warrant article on our agenda for the evening. That's Article 18, which is a resolution regarding surveillance cameras in Brookline. If the speakers could come forward and take their seats at the table.
I'm Sarah Wunsch.
Oh, thank you, Sean.
So, you get two and a half minutes?
I thought we got five minutes.
You get five minutes amongst the two of you?
He can do what he has to do, and then I'll take what's left.
Right, so you're entitled to break that up in, both of you, both groups are entitled to break that up in any way you like. Break it up anyway. Last discussion of the night relates to Article 18 on cameras, and I'm going to start with Clinch, Clint Richmond, Frank Farlow, and Sarah Wunsch. So, is that, I'm assuming that's your group?
No.
No, your police chief, you must be the police chief. Okay, so, I bet, is that you guys?
I'm Sarah. Frank.
I don't know.
Frank Spaskey, I was just a little confused, thank you.
That's fine.
So, you have opening remarks.
Okay, thank you.
And you have up to five minutes in total.
Thank you. My name is Clint Richmond. I'm a co-petitioner and town meeting member from Precinct 6. I'd like to start with a little history on how we got here. We've been having this debate for five years. Our current situation is the cameras are on for eight overnight hours per day. This is a compromise we do not seek but have accepted. However, the chief and others, such as the Oversight Committee, have continued to argue for 24/7 operation. If this were not the case, we would not be bringing this warrant article at the present time. Since keeping the cameras seems to keep inviting more hours, and we think eventually more features and more cameras, we are asking to reaffirm the resolution from 2009, Town Meeting, Springtown Meeting, to remove them. This resolution returns us to the fundamental question of what kind of society do we want? And part of this involves what kind of police force do we want? So, we oppose permanent mass surveillance because we think it compromises the core American values of freedom and liberty. I believe that we should be able to walk down the street and not be continuously photographed by our government, just as we have for over 200 years. Furthermore, I believe that we are not honoring the fundamental religious principle of the inherent worth and dignity of every person, if every person is under, constantly under surveillance, in a perpetual dragnet, waiting for them to do something wrong or be suspected of doing something wrong. Mass surveillance chills our rights to free expression and assembly enshrined in our Constitution. I believe that the Police Department can provide all due assistance to our security agencies without conducting mass surveillance. Mass surveillance is undermining our relationship to the police and militarizing our public spaces, including various buildings that are used in the networking of the cameras, I might add. So, we now have security clearances for some police officers that I think can complicate our ability as civilians to oversee our Police Department. One change in the last five years has been in the growth of private cameras, which do not pose the same threats to privacy and civil liberties as a network of government cameras. Private cameras are used by the police on a regular basis, and our opinion has eliminated the need for mass surveillance. I think that together, we can continue to work towards a society and world that becomes stronger and safer by solving its ills and respecting human dignity and human rights at the same time. Please join with the Jewish Alliance for Law and Social Action, the Bill Rights Defense Committee, and the ACLU in support of Article 18. Thank you.
I'm Sarah Wunsch. I live on Brook Street in Brookline. I also work for the American Civil Liberties Union of Massachusetts. As Clint said, in 2009, Town Meeting, by a wide margin, voted a resolution to not allow these Department of Homeland Security-funded, permanently-placed police surveillance cameras. The only thing that's really changed since that time is that we have learned a huge amount more about government abuses and surveillance. And if anything, I think it is really important now to send a message from Brookline that this is not a society that should operate in that way. And I know the chief will say, "We just have 11 cameras, they're a tool for us, they, you know, we want them on 24 hours a day." I don't think that's the point, that there's just 11 and they don't take very good pictures. The point is, this is building an infrastructure for government surveillance, and it is not the hallmark of a free society. So, I think it's very important for the town to send the message that we are opposed. It is a resolution, Article 18 is a resolution, telling the selectmen that that's the kind of society we want to live in, in which we are not watched at all times as we go about our business. There are people who will say, "Gee, you're arguing a slippery slope, I'll get, I don't care about these 11, I'll worry about the massive structure when we get there." I think that's the wrong way to look at this also. This is part of a whole infrastructure that is being built. And if you wait until, you know, 500 cameras are requested, it will be too late. We need to take the steps now to send the message. I also know that people say, "Oh, there's so many private cameras, who cares about these few government cameras?" There is a difference between private cameras and government police cameras, and make no mistake about it. There are the ability to network, we are part of the greater Boston-area system, those records can be shared, they can be made part of a public records request. Some people say they like the cameras because they feel safe. There is absolutely no evidence that these kinds of cameras make us safe. There are steps that can be taken that have been shown to make people safer, things like improved lighting, good community policing techniques. There is no evidence that these kind of cameras are effective in that way. And even though we all, we all want to be safe, but simply making policy based on our feelings is not the way this town ought to operate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, five minutes for your side as well. Hi, Chief.
Hi. Thank you. Ian Paulenbaum, Town Meeting, Precinct 6, I'm also on the Oversight Committee. This really is a classic case of feelings and fears versus facts. And I know it's ironic to put it that way. My day job, I prosecute murders in Boston. Video is used all the time to great effect and without much complaint. I don't think we're so special and so different in this bubble because we're just across the line. I know it's ironic because the government does use fear to justify measures, and there's plenty to be worried about. And you can't work in local law enforcement in Boston, in the history we've had, without agreeing with that and respecting those fears. It's just not a good fit with these cameras. The cameras at 11 public intersections on Route 9 and Beacon Street, it's not enough to say, "Well, these are of a piece with, with these intrusive measures into people's private doings." What has happened in five years? One thing that's happened in five years is that the fears about these cameras have not come to pass. They're not run as continuous surveillance, they're not run as tracking individuals, and they're not practical to be used for that. They're not used to look into homes, they're not used as a perpetual dragnet. The factual record, that's the other difference from five years ago, is you have a factual record that shows that the video footage does help in cases large and in cases small. I shouldn't really call them small, because even a traffic accident is not small to the person involved. The other thing the factual record shows is that these cameras are highly regulated, and that's the difference from private cameras. Private cameras, people can do absolutely whatever they want, there's no regulation whatsoever for the purpose, the extent, the use. And the use is transparent. The Police Department issues those periodic reports, dates, times, locations, types of incidents, why footage was requested. Everybody who's gonna vote on this warrant article, it behooves you to read those things, and it behooves you to read the detailed selectmen's policy. There's also the biggest statistic of all, which is zero, as in almost four years under the current special order, zero allegations of any misuse of these cameras, let alone any documented instances. So, you can't just use, you know, the buzzwords of networking and NSA and drones and dragnet and surveillance, and, you know, you hear enough of those, you freak out. The selectmen didn't, they didn't feel that way. They voted five to nothing against this warrant article as a recommendation. Most of the advisory committee felt the same way, and I suggest to you, as town meeting members, that unless you're very carefully selecting your sample, most of your constituents now feel that way, too, because they see the facts that have happened versus whether the fears have panned out. And I'll leave some time for the chief.
Good evening. Chief Dan O'Leary from the Police Department. We have been talking about these cameras since 2009, and it's been, we've been talking about it because before we even installed them, before we even purchased them or accepted them from the U.S.C. group, we brought it before the town and asked the town to start having public hearings as to whether or not we wanted to go forward with these cameras. And the decision made, was made to go ahead and go forward, and we did. And we initially put the cameras up, we put them on major thoroughfares, major intersections, and it was done to assist in the evacuation in case an emergency happened within the city of Boston, but it was also being done to keep the thoroughfares open into and out of the Longwood Medical Area. But at that time, it was clear to me and a lot of other people that there are other uses that we could have used it for, and we wanted to make the public aware of the things that we knew that we could use these cameras for. Now, they're located, they're fixed on traffic poles at the major intersections, they cannot be used for surveillance, they cover the area within the intersection. They don't go down the street and follow after somebody, there's no way you can do that. But we have used them to handle major events, including the Boston Marathon, we've used them during major snowstorms, major storms, major events, major traffic incidents, we've used it for criminal investigations, we've removed drunk drivers from the road because of it, we've been able to resolve accidents, we've solved crimes by using these, some pretty dangerous crimes, pretty heinous crimes, too. And I take exception when people say that the cameras do not help, do not improve safety, because if you can get a rapist off the street on a plea for over 20 years, two rapists, that's pretty much, a pretty good move at making Brookline a little bit safer. There's a lot of, a lot of times we get crimes reported to us, they're not necessarily take place, we don't believe they take place, the cameras speak for themselves. We've had two incidents in town where people have reported armed robberies, one in Brookline Village, one in Coolidge Corner, that could have increased a lot of fear among the people in the community. Through the cameras, we're able to put holes in the story, the people recanted the story, and it didn't come out and make people nervous about walking our streets. That, I think, is a value of the cameras.
Thank you, Chief. I'm sure there'll be more opportunities to speak. People with questions should please come to the mic. And if you wouldn't mind identifying yourself.
Jesse Rossmann, the ACLU of Massachusetts. With all due respect, I disagree a bit with the characterization that talking about the NSA or federal surveillance or statewide surveillance are merely buzzwords. I think if there's one thing that we've learned, certainly over the past six months, it's regardless of agreements that may be in place, if there's a technical capacity for sharing to occur, it can and sometimes will be done, regardless of what a paper agreement says. And there certainly have been several instances over the past six months where we have seen the NSA and other federal organizations routinely violate agreements and/or constitutional maxims when it comes to invading our privacy. And I'm concerned that in this instance, it appears that there certainly is a technical capacity for additional sharing and additional technology to be added to these cameras, and I'm interested in hearing your thoughts on that, and what kind of message Brookline can be sending about not standing for this in this community. Thank you.
And please, feel free to start, Chief.
Sure. Before we even put the cameras up, we wrote a policy, and the policy has become a model for, I think, a lot of progressive police departments around the state. We've given it to them to design their own. In the policy, it sets out explicit reasons when we can share information of the images. Right now, every one of those images that are recorded from the cameras are kept in the Brookline Police Station. They are not networked to other departments, other departments cannot get the information that's on that video unless we give it to them. When everybody talks about the NSA, I don't think the NSA is really concerned about 11 traffic cameras that are up on the major intersections in the town of Brookline as really helping their way to get information on citizens. We look at it as a way to keep Brookline a lot safer. We're not looking at it to share information with the federal government that would add to people's concerns and fears of the government. We're looking at it as a way to make Brookline safer. I think we have plenty of instances where we've been able to use the footage from these cameras to, to help in our efforts. There was a comment made earlier that it changes the outlook of the Police Department. No, it does not. We try to make as many advances as we can in technology to provide the best level of public safety for the residents of our town. The use of cameras, whether it's the 11 public cameras or the private cameras, are an excellent way to, to help us in our criminal investigations, help us get the people off the streets that are hurting our citizens. And I think these 11 cameras have shown their worth to us, and I don't want to see them taken down.
Thank you very much. Clint or Sarah, you have up to two minutes to respond.
We can't base policy for the town on who the current chief is. There will be other chiefs, we need to base policy on evidence. And I think there has never been an adequate study of the cameras in Brookline and their relationship to preventing crime. In other places, for San Francisco, for example, the University of California, Berkeley, did a valid study, I would say, very academic and thorough, that's never been done here. The Camera Oversight Committee now has supporters of the cameras on it, they are not people with the skills, I wouldn't have the skills to do that kind of evaluation. The NSA is an example of where we're going, and that's why, and nobody's saying these cameras are connected to the NSA, but the NSA represents something that this society needs to take very seriously, and that's why I think the question came up about the relationship to the NSA. What we've learned about the NSA is what we need to be learning about the whole system, the infrastructure that enables the police and the government to keep an eye on us at all times when we are going about our daily business. So, I think they're very legitimate questions, and there is an absolute need for Town Meeting to have its voice heard on this important issue.
I would just add that, you know, we don't have to go as far as Washington to find issues of inappropriate use of this kind of technology. The Boston Police Department, which is the lead in our DHS region, has been shown to be spying on local peace groups, like Veterans for Peace and Code Pink. So, you know, things do happen, people are human, that's why we want to, that's why we're, that's why we're saying that maybe this is too powerful to give to a local police force. And let's, you know, we can keep the secret stuff with the secret agencies.
Thank you. Next question.
John Bassett, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. I have three questions, although two might be very short. Can I ask three questions?
Yes, you may.
These are, I think, mostly for the chief, at least, at first. Do you have plans to keep the cameras on 24 hours or 24/7? Is that what you would like to do?
That is what I'd like to do. I don't have the final say on it. We appeared in front of the Camera Committee. The Camera Committee had recommended, four to nothing, to approach the Board of Selectmen to put them on 24 hours. That has not been done yet. The Board of Selectmen has not taken it up.
Right, thanks. And if you had your druthers, would you, would you get more cameras and would DHS pay for them?
Well...
Well, that's not in the plans. I have not had plans, I have not made any agreements with anybody to add any more cameras to our system.
Right, thanks. I guess the last question is, as I remember, you agreed to keep the data from the cameras for a limited time, something like two weeks, and then to destroy it. Was that, is that right?
That's correct. We have a retention policy of 14 days, and then the camera, camera video footage is recorded over. The exception to that is if we're using it for an investigation and it becomes evidence, we then have to follow our evidence policy. We make a copy of the section of the, of the video that pertains to the case that we're investigating. It gets put, reduced to a DVD and submitted into our evidence officer to retain as part of our evidence for the case.
But could your intention to destroy it or to record over it be, how to say, be overruled by a superior agency, by a state or federal agency or a court? There must be ways in which you could be required to keep information longer than two weeks.
Well, John, one issue with the 14 days is that, and I know 14 days was part of the agreement, because one of the apprehensions people have is this stuff being kept too long, because people think the longer it's kept, the more nefarious purpose it can be served. The problem is, there's a state law that's very clear that a video or audio generated by a municipal agency, whether it's considered a public record eventually or not, must be kept. More accurately, the state statute refers to regulations. Those regulations say that video or audio by municipality must be kept for one month. And so, two problems then with the 14-day period. One is, the town is violating the law every single day by overriding the stuff after two weeks. The other problem, and there was a mention of the camera committee having supporters on it. I'm a prosecutor who's used this stuff in cases. I came on telling the selectmen I supported them. Two members of the committee are criminal defense attorneys who were very skeptical, and one of the reasons they came around to it is the potential for relevant or possibly exculpatory evidence. What the chief alluded to was showing that crimes didn't happen or didn't happen the way people said, and as a practical matter, if a defendant wants some footage to try and prove that, by the time they get to the next court date after arraignment, those two weeks have probably passed and it's gone. So those are the issues surrounding the retention period. It's not before Town Meeting, but I hope it's responsive to your question.
Ian, thanks. Are you saying that we could comply with the intent of the original two-week rule and the state law by simply keeping it for a month and then destroying it?
Well, ironically, the selectmen's policy says it shall be destroyed after 14 days unless otherwise required by law. There's at least an argument that it's otherwise required by law right now, but we're still asking the selectmen to make the call on that.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask if this side, you have up to two minutes.
Thank you. So the number of DHS cameras has been increasing over time. The initial allotment did not include, was a Phase 1, which did not include Boston or Cambridge or Somerville, and Boston itself has increased DHS cameras over time. So it's not, I mean, you know, we say we have 11 now, but the system of which we are part has been growing even if we haven't, and it's not to say that we can in the future. And DHS giving them away has distorted our normal budgetary process. It's our contention that these cameras, with their modest benefits in crime fighting and traffic monitoring and so forth, don't meet any kind of common sense cost-benefit analysis. And if these were such a great tools, then I think the chief would be requesting them out of his regular budget. So the fact that we're using this DHS funds, these enormous billions of dollars from DHS is not really kind of a real basis for making a decision.
Thank you. I got one more minute. You're not required to use it.
We could save it for later.
I'll help everybody out by not talking more. Okay. All right. Next question.
Hi. George Abbott White, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9. So I have a, it was alluded to by both sides, as it were, but I guess my question is, are there no good uses for cameras? Let me just, yeah, okay. Are there no good uses for cameras? So, you know, I've been here 40 years, and snow's not as bad as Detroit, but, so the cameras can't possibly serve any purpose for that. I've seen a few traffic accidents in Brookline, and I, there's no use for the cameras whatsoever in terms of, you know, tie-ups. We had a horrendous marathon situation and a lot of, let's face it, panic throughout this part of the Commonwealth. So the cameras served or could serve no purpose in those kinds of situations. So I'd like, I'd like folks to respond. And the other thing is, maybe the chief can help on this, how good are they? There was a remark that they were sort of fuzzy, or you couldn't tell what was going on, but my iPhone can take, you know, fabulous, I don't have the 5C, but fabulous images. So I imagine this stuff, I wonder, is it good, is it not good? You know, because if it's good, I guess it would hold up in court, and if it's fuzzy...
Thank you very much. Thanks very much. Okay, up to two minutes.
Of course, cameras have some good purposes. We have never opposed temporary cameras. We've never opposed cameras for special events. We've never opposed cameras temporarily in locations where there was a crime problem, but there's a huge difference between those uses and the installation of really permanent police surveillance cameras. When these cameras were originally proposed, we were told they were going to help in evacuations from Boston in case of some huge emergency. People really laughed at that, because the truth is, we know in Brookline where our intersections get jammed on a daily basis. So you don't need the cameras for that purpose. Look, there are tools which could make us absolutely safe. You could have a camera everywhere, recording any bad deed that ever gets done, but we choose not to live like that. So I think there is a balance here, and what we're asking for is, we have cameras that can be used on a temporary basis in special locations. The marathon bombings, there were sufficient private cameras that really captured the images that were necessary. You don't need the government-installed, permanent watching of us. And it's not a matter of privacy in public places, it's a matter of what people, some people call anonymity, the right to go about your business in public places without being watched and potentially followed, because the technology is there to give us better quality images, to give us the tracking and the facial recognition. The Registry of Motor Vehicles already keeps a facial recognition database. So we have to decide how we want to live and what messages we want to send to the selectmen and to the country about what kind of a nation this is.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any more time?
And, excuse me?
Okay.
The two of you have two minutes to respond. Up to.
Sure. The cameras that we're talking about, if they are removed, they take away the tool that we have along the major intersections. When we talk, when they're talking about special event cameras not being opposed, well, these are used for special events. We have a lot of walks in town, we have the marathon, we have the bike rides, we have runs through town, and we use them to manage and to make sure that people don't get hurt, or if they do get hurt, that we can get medical assistance to them. The closest thing to an evacuation Boston has had in the time that we've had here was during the marathon, and we did use the cameras to keep one side of Beacon Street closed down, and we used that to get emergency medical people into the medical center and to get buses up and down the outbound, inbound side of Beacon Street to make sure that the runners got picked up and got brought to safety. You asked about how good the cameras are. You cannot see people's faces. However, you can see enough to help you in a court of law, and I'll give you a couple of instances. The horrendous kidnapping and rape that we had up in Coolidge Corner, right after the cameras were put up. We were able to see the truck that these people stalked that woman with, and we were able to see right down to the make, model, color of the truck, and the fact that it had a door replaced on it. We took it to a mechanic shop, they told us the exact year, date, and time, date of the truck. We were able to do our investigative work, and within two days, we had one person under arrest, within four, we had the other subject under arrest. We could see an accident in Coolidge Corner where a woman came over an island, knocked down a sign, parked on the side of the road. When the officer showed up, she said she was not the driver, that her boyfriend jumped out of the car and ran away. We were able to put her under arrest, it was a second offense for driving under, I thought that was good to get her off the street. She needs to get some help, she's not supposed to be driving a car. So they give us enough images, enough clarity, that we can come out and we can see, and we can let it go in court, or put it forward in court, that people can make a decision whether they want to go to trial or not. It does not allow us to see people's faces, it doesn't allow us to see what they're reading, but it gives us enough to go on.
Thank you. Are there more questions? And if you would identify yourself, please.
Good evening. My name's Frank Farlow. I'm a Town Meeting Member and co-chair of Brookline PACS. Since Town Meeting originally opposed installation of these DHS-funded cameras by a vote of two to one, PACS has been particularly concerned about the slippery slope that the town stepped out onto when it acquired them. I'd like to point out that we no longer have to make questionable guesses about the slipperiness of that slope. First, it was two mobile cameras, then it was 12 stationary DHS cameras. Next, it was an automated license plate reader that takes 1,000 photos per minute. Now there are some cameras in Brookline Housing Authority buildings, and at the last Town Meeting, we learned for the first time, the cameras are also in operation at several of our schools, with more coming. The two mobile cameras, previously used only for special investigations, have recently been operated in one location for extended periods, just like the DHS cameras, and now the current proposal is for 24/7 operation of the cameras.
Thank you very much for your question.
That's six steps down the slippery slope in just four years.
Thank you, Frank. I don't think that was actually a question, so I wasn't going to refer that. Is that acceptable?
I can respond if you think it's appropriate.
You respond, I'm going to let both sides respond, and that's acceptable, I mean, if you like.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, I'll consider it a germane talking point.
Very good.
Which kind of illustrates, I'd have to say, the kind of conflation of these cameras, fixed cameras in public intersections with the most intrusive measures that the government has. I mean, things that people are concerned about, that really talk about people's private activities, private communications, emails, phone, financial transactions. It's, and again, it's really, it's really not a good fit to just say it's all part of, it's all on the same slippery slope, and that's the only analysis you need. The philosophy seems to be, then, technology's leaping forward, and there are more and more ways that technology can be abused by the government and other people and private corporations, and I'll get to that in a second, and yet, local law enforcement should stay behind. Everybody out there, companies, individuals, other government agencies, have all these tools that can be used in all kinds of ways, good and not so good, but let's not make them available to the police department under a highly regulated regime of operation. That just doesn't seem to make any sense. It's also a little puzzling to hear fellow progressives, because I do consider myself one, give private cameras a pass in order to make their point about government cameras. You'd ask yourself, are you really more worried about these cameras than you are about what corporations do with footage to monitor their customers, monitor their employees, exercise control in much more meaningful and much more mysterious ways, because none of it's transparent? So I hope that Frank's point got you thinking about some of these things.
Thank you. There is a big difference between the government watching us and a private business or a bank having a camera, and there are limits, actually, on what private businesses can do to their own employees. So I think that we're here to talk about the government, which we, is supposed to be answerable to us, and the government spying or surveilling us. There are other societies in the world where that does go on to an incredible extent, and it's fair to ask the question, do we want to live in one of those kinds of societies? We're not Luddites, not wanting any technology for our police department, but it is fair to say, how is the government using the various types of technologies? They will get improved technology down the road, we know it, and that's why it is important to begin to say. You haven't actually shown, one, that these are effective in making us safer, it hasn't been adequately studied. The annual report from the chief just gives some incidents about traffic accidents that have been helped and various other incidents, but that's not the kind of study you need. And even if it were an effective tool, we have to make decisions about whether we want the camera on every corner with the best technology that could possibly prevent crime or solve every crime. We don't really want to live that way.
Thirty seconds.
I would also add that private cameras are not public record, the same way that our government cameras are. The private cameras are not part of a network, and we've been, you know, we've been solving crimes for 200 years without cameras. I don't know why all of a sudden we need this, this magical solution is going to solve so much. You know, the cameras have not been helpful, according to the chief's report, in any Part A violent crimes for the first part of 2013. And we have thousands of crimes every year, violent crimes, and in 2010, it was 0.2% of the Part A crimes were captured or where the cameras were of any assistance. So it's easy to trot out a few anecdotes, but that's not, that's not the bread and butter of our police department. And, you know, it's in the dispatch office, someone's watching it, but it's really not essential to its crime-fighting or public safety function.
Thank you.
Amy Hummelton, Meeting Member, Precinct 12. So I just had a lot of notes down, but I'll keep it brief. I still, I don't think the question quite got answered, is if DHS were to offer us more cameras, would we take them? Or what would that be like? Is this enough? That, I felt like there was a bit of a punt there on that response, so I'd actually like to hear more of an answer to it. If those were offered, you know, free from the town budget, realizing that, of course, we're paying for it anyway through our federal tax dollars, it's not free, it's just coming out of a different pot. But, you know, I think that's an important question, and, you know, we've already paid for the ALPRs, it came out of other monies in there, which is, that's the automatic license plate reader, which is scooping up all of our licenses, no matter where you parked, even in your own home, so we've paid for that. So, you know, what would be willing to pay for that? What do we need as a town that way, particularly when the cameras really sound like they've mostly been used to affirm the good police work that our department does and to do sort of things after the fact? And then my other question is, and I asked this earlier, but I'd like a full answer, really, is the mobile cameras, we have two. I believe one is just positioned singularly on Harvard Street, and I could be wrong, but I believe it's there, because there is such low crime here, so it hasn't needed to move a whole lot, which I realize is not completely easy to do. But when there was a spate of crime in North Brookline, I think, I wonder if one of that mobile camera was put there and, you know, if that helped in any way? Because there were a lot of private cameras that were helpful and good police work, and I'm, you know, because I think that's an important thing to know. We're investing things this way, there seems to be a push to have this all-seeing eye, and when most of the data shows that it is not, in fact, prevent crime. It may take a few people off the street here and again, but they come back and there are others who replace them, and there's tons of data to show that here and in the UK. So, you know, what really is the purpose? I'm not sure, you know, other than cleanup, how useful they've been. So this mobile camera I'm wondering about, and what if we did get offered more cameras?
If we get offered more cameras, it's not a decision for me to make. I mean, everybody here is talking about the slippery slope and facial recognition and everything else. Every time something like that is even contemplated or looked to go at, I would have to come back in front of the board of selectmen and ask their permission to make a correction or an update in their policy, and that brings it out to public debate. It's not a decision for me to make. If I was going to do anything like that and change that policy at all, it's come back to the public forum for the public to discuss, much like we're doing here tonight. And your other question about it being a public crime-fighting function... If I was going to do anything like that and change that policy at all, it's come back to the public forum for the public to discuss, much like we're doing here tonight. And your other question about it being a public crime-fighting function, it's not helping, I dispute that. I mean, I know that Clint just made mention of Part A crimes. Well, you've got to remember, these cameras are only on from 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM, to 6:00 AM. You don't get, we don't, there's not a lot of people out for Part A crimes to occur within the 11 intersections that we have had. We have used these cameras to help us solve crimes, I mentioned a couple of them, and I'll give you another one that helped us with. If we can take these cameras, the images from these cameras, even if the crimes don't occur there, but we can see a subject fleeing from a scene, we can put that subject along the pathway. And the thing was, it's not that it reaffirms our good police work, it really assists good police work, and it really assists the way we can go about prosecuting people and to get the bad guy off the street, which is really our job to do to make Brookline a little bit safer. I just think that we're not giving these cameras the value that they really have to us, and it's impossible to put a dollar figure on it. Everyone keeps saying that it's not cost-effective. Well, it is cost-effective, because we try whatever avenue we can to make a proper solution to a crime, and to properly investigate a crime. If we can get an image from a camera, and we can get an identification made, I think you all remember the spate of armed robberies we had in North Brookline. Yes, we do have a camera down in North Brookline, and we had a spate of robberies going on in there. And we had armed robberies, people coming in here with guns, we had photographic images of three of those armed robberies. Well, all those subjects were arrested really quickly, right after their armed robberies, all based on us being able to capture images from the cameras. Were they our cameras? No, because the times that they occurred, they were shut off.
Thank you, Chief.
There were other cameras, and that's how we got the identifications made, valuable cameras.
Thank you, Chief. Up to two minutes.
So, the private camera you just mentioned that helped in the armed robberies, where was that?
One camera was on Dexter Park, one camera was on Brookline housing property, the other camera was on transit property.
Right, so, so the, we don't have any public cameras in that area, so even if we had 24-hour operation...
We don't, we don't have surveillance cameras throughout the town. We have cameras up on 11 intersections. We have mobile cameras that we will put up when we have a specific crime or another neighborhood problem occurring that the cameras can help us with. And that is it. It is not a mass surveillance, there's not cameras in every way, there's much more private cameras where the people are willing to give us those images to help us, along with images from our cameras, to make Brookline a little bit safer.
What percentage of the time are the mobile cameras being used for crime fighting?
I don't have an answer for you on that.
Half, quarter?
I don't have an answer to that.
Okay, great. Next question.
Corr. Lee Van Der Zeele, town meeting member from precinct 15. It's interesting to hear someone talk about the fear of cameras, whereas cameras are being sold and people's fears are being used to bolster the use of cameras, in what I've seen when the public hearings I've gone to about this. And the other comment about cameras not being run continuously, I know that's what the police department would like to do, so, I mean, that's a reality. The questions I have is, I understand that the video can be asked for by, I don't know who else, I'd like to know who, and if that's ever happened in the last four years? The other thing is, after the marathon bombing and after the second suspect was arrested, how long did those cameras stay on after that? And why?
We kept the cameras on for a period of time, probably several weeks, to make sure that, we thought that it was in the best interest of the public safety to keep the cameras on in case something else was to occur.
And that was 24/7, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Our system, just to show you our transparency, our system, when we turn those cameras on, notifications go out to each member of the Board of Selectmen. They're aware when those cameras go on and the reasons why we put them on. So, it's not that we can put a camera on and then hide it. Each time we turn the camera on on those off-dials, somebody gets a notification, and then we respond as to why we turn them on, so they know that. And your other, your first question?
So, the other question was, have you ever been asked for the videos by anyone? And so, I'd like to know who asked for them, and how often that has happened?
We've been asked once for the video, aside from the court, and the gentleman that asked for it is sitting right over here, Clint Richmond. So, maybe you got asked.
So, how many times did the court, has the court asked?
We've provided them to the court on a number of occasions for court cases.
And that's it?
And Clint.
Now, Chief, I seem to remember a police patrol car accident, where it was requested by the TAB and published on their website.
Oh, well.
And I thought it'd also been used in accident cases, too.
I would, accident cases?
Yeah, has people requested the video for, to resolve accidents?
We have not had video provided to the public on accidents. They may, they may have called to request, and then they were not covered as part of it, but the only one that made a FOIA request is you.
But this raises an important point, which is that private cameras are not subject to the state public records law. So, I can't go to Bank of America and say, I want to see your video footage from last week. I can go to the town and say, I'm requesting video footage from the camera at Coolidge Corner, and I would be entitled to have that.
As a private citizen?
Yes, anybody can request any, any public record, subject to certain exemptions, which don't really apply here. So, in general, I mean, you're saying these are things that happen out in the public, so it's not private, right? So, I should be able to request that video? Great. Thank you very much for your question.
Diana Spiegel, town meeting member from precinct 2. I voted against the installation of the cameras, but I live in Sector 1, where there were multiple muggings, many of them armed, last winter, and I helped to organize a meeting of neighbors on a very snowy night, February 11th, and over 100 people came. When all the schools were closed, they opened devotion school just for us. And I'm now feeling really concerned, because I talked to my neighbors and constituents, and people felt safer with cameras, both public and private. And I feel as though some people want no cameras at all, some people want them on 24 hours a day, and that perhaps the current plan of 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM is a compromise.
Thank you. Do we get to speak to Diana's? Yeah, we have closing remarks. Oh, okay. So, and I think this is going to call it a night, so we're going to move on to closing remarks. And having started on my right, I'm going to start on my left with the closing remarks. So, Chief Daniels and Ian, if you would please go through your closing remarks, and you have up to one minute.
Okay. First, off the clock, I'll just say, some of us have law degrees here, so asking us to have those time limits is both sadistic and brilliant, so I commend you for that.
He's using his time, isn't he?
Yeah. Okay.
He's trying to charm you.
Content neutral.
I think Ian's used half his time.
Oh, no.
I hope.
I don't mind if you get an extra 13 seconds.
I'm kidding. I'm just kidding.
The, I mean, the bottom line, again, is really, what's the practical utility? I would urge people in town meeting before voting on this to do a few things. One is, go across the street, 20 minutes, those screens go on. If you haven't seen the screens in the lobby of the Public Safety Building, go over there and look at them, it's not going to delay your bedtime too much longer, so you know what we're looking at, what they can look at, what we're talking about. Second, read that Board of Selectmen policy. Third, take a look at the reports in terms of the numbers of incidents and the numbers of potentially missed incidents. The second thing, and this gets back to the philosophical aspect, is I really urge you not to vote a certain way just because you think you want Brookline to send a message that Brookline has to keep its status, and maybe we're in some kind of competition with Cambridge. I mean, Cambridge is an awesome place, my family lived there for 27 years, but it's not a model in every way of how to run a city. I'll just leave that at that. We don't need to do something just because Cambridge might be doing it, or to send a message of how we feel about other things the federal government is doing. This is local law enforcement and public safety policy, and it really should be based on practicality and common sense, what we urge the selectmen to do. Thank you.
Up to one minute. If there are places where there are multiple muggings, for example, the mobile cameras can be put there and can be used to solve those crimes, and I hope that would address people's feelings on that issue. I think it is important to send a message in order to at least stay with the current system, which is the evening hours, because if, if Article 18 is rejected, I fear that both the chief and the Board of Selectmen will think that they can go ahead now and expand however much they want. So, I think sending a message is actually very important. And I'd like to say to people who might watch this on cable TV, if you want more information, the ACLU has a statement about Article 18. If you go to privacySOS.org and search under "Brookline," you will get the blue sheets, which I brought some of, and are at the back of the room. And I do hope people will vote in favor of Article 18. Thank you both, and a good evening to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I just have one quick announcement and a few thank yous. As was just pointed out, there are some handouts from various speakers, feel free to pick them up as you leave. Thanks again to the TMMA and Harry Friedman for providing refreshments and helping to organize, to other BNA board members, and particularly Dan Salzman, the co-chair, to the League of Women Voters for providing timekeeper Lee Cook Childs to enforce our sadistic, yet brilliant, time limits, and especially to Amelia for being such a wonderful moderator. Thanks to all of you for coming tonight, and to all of the speakers. And remember, this is being broadcast and will be rebroadcast by Brookline Access Television. If you really like this, you can watch it again, I'm sure it'll be repeated several times. Thanks to all of you. Good night.
Enjoy the book, read the movement.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Tough job.
......